Just flashed across when I was...
I didn't see that on Mixle. Oh, they did. That's good.
It was on, what is that called? Regular, no, when I just clicked on the internet, it was on regular, say, regular news, but whatever comes up, your feed. All right. It is 9:36 and we are here for a land use workshop. With that, we'll turn it over to Director Gabel.
So, we've started the workshop. We have a, it's herding cats. So, we have a series of workshops planned. This was originally planned for last, last week, I think it was the 28th. The board pushed it back to this week, so we have a meeting today. We have a workshop tomorrow, and then we have, like, Thursdays moving forward. We skip one week when the board's out on a conference. So, just kind of general awareness, 1:30 to 3 is our typical meeting times, moving forward on Thursdays, 1:30 to 3, 3:30, I think. So, all of those agendas have been published, available to the public, so they can stay aware. So, this is in response to the board continuing the land use component, the previous hearing. I think that was earlier in August or mid-August, where the board wanted additional time to review the text and the map of the land use component, make additional changes. So, I believe Commissioner Domke, looks like he just submitted his over, and I can drop that into our drive. So, I've created a folder under the, your Commissioner Documents folder for land use. It's called Comprehensive Plan Land Use Component, so I'll start dropping in the versions of, that you guys are drafting. But I believe, tentatively, the plan was to have two to three workshops talking about the text, and then two workshops talking about the map. I've reached out to GIS, and they gave Commissioner Domke a link to modify or make changes on the land use map. And whenever you're ready to jump to the map, they'll have an employee available to sit in these meetings and make real-time changes and documents, or document changes on the draft map before it goes to a hearing, with the end goal of finalizing the draft by middle of next month for a hearing by mid-November and adoption at that time. Did I capture everything right on the overview? Did I miss anything?
Sound to you good.
Okay. So, on that, I can present the proposed land use component draft that Commissioner Domke submitted.
Unless, was there a continuation of a conversation first about glossary of terms?
There was.
So, yeah, so glossary of terms, I think the board gave me a list at the previous hearing. I presented that to the Planning Commission last night. They grumbled their way through most of it, and I have, that was a nice way to put it. Oh, Alan is on. I think maybe two-thirds, and then they wanted to kick it back to the next meeting in October when the new commission gets seated. So, I don't think they intended to take it up at the next meeting. I think they have two hearing items, they're going to take up the bulk of that meeting.
Okay. On the glossary of terms, is it that it's just too big of a project for what the remaining board has left? Is that the thought, or was there no appetite? Because in part, one of the, in going over more terms and kind of the process by which other, kind of the industry standard on how glossaries are done, it just further cements for me the importance of it. And I actually am not opposed to the more time, in part because I think there's an opportunity for us to marry ordinance with our comprehensive plan a little bit better. One of the, kind of the defining documents for the glossaries using the industry standard is that we don't define words that are actually, not using our comp plan as our, what we make definitions out of, but only defining terms that are actually found in the ordinance, and marrying those terminologies together with a little bit of a bridge over not just planning and zoning, but also planning, zoning, kind of like the political view of some words, as well as the way in which people actually speak, not that you give a definition that's non-standard, but that we try to pull it into the more technical term, which that's, it's more, it's a huge undertaking for, I think, just one or two meetings, so I can see, see the idea of it. I'm wondering if there's not a better way of making a plan then for the, the approach that we want them to take for it, because it's a huge, when I look at the different documents on the definitions of terms, the reason, and I wanted to research when we last spoke, one of the comments made was that there's multiple definitions of a same similar term, but then when you actually go through the, it's like a 500-page definition book from the American Planning, the reason that exists is because they're trying to address that the definition of terms does have an element of the political area that the words are being used from. And if we gave maybe a better directive to planning, I think that, that might help, because I don't think it's as easy as look this word up and tell us the definition of this word. That's why there's more than one definition. So, that was my thought on it. I had, I had brought quite a few different resources just related to the glossary that I, it's not, it's not easy, but equally, everybody recognizes the need to have the glossary. And I don't, and I think when I, when I look at our comprehensive plan, and then I look at our ordinance, and just go through even some words that seem basic but mean a lot, like the word ensures, what do we mean by ensure? The definition of even light, you know, when we talk about light pollution, their definitions include, your light just spilling over into someone else's property is considered pollution. And how do we want to interpret those kinds of things? I think there's a much longer list and a much more concise way. And my request is, what if we, as a board, gave direction based on the American Planning's association by which you create your glossary as a foundation? And their, their directive is actually, it doesn't mean it's easy, but it's actually very short, very specific to not defining terms that are not in your ordinance. It's intended to simplify text. We should not run counter to generally accepted meaning of words and phrases. Let's see. Do not define it if it is not used in the ordinance. And that was a big one.
We don't want to spend time on that?
Well, because you can run amok in the comprehensive plan, if you do that. And I think in some ways, when we were talking about land use, we were in the comprehensive plan, identifying words in the comprehensive plan, which may have very well been in the ordinance, but instead of using that as the document by which you pull the words from, using the ordinance, it had...
So, can we discuss that? Or do you want to finish? Sorry.
No, I had another comment. Using federal, state, or county definitions, if available, but they actually, and I don't know this answer, and maybe a planner knows, they actually say, prior to 1997, if available. They don't want newer words defined, and that actually was common throughout multiple different planning dictionaries. They don't like words after 1997, if available. And when I was trying to understand that, it had to do with slang terminology has become more wordy versus industry technical words. I thought that was an interesting thing. And words should be defined within the context of the legislative intent of the zone district and other uses permitted in the district. So, they had some guidelines by which to do it, and I just feel like maybe we need to not start with a list of words, but the context by which we're trying to build a glossary. So, that was kind of my thought on it. I did do a lot of research on different terms and how you come up with it. We're going to have a lot of differences, and in part, one of the things I felt like we did was, some of our words we used when we're making it, but some, a little bit of conflict of, what does the ordinance say, and that there's a tweak of a definition based on the way we worded it in the comp plan versus what it, the phraseology in the actual ordinance. So, anyhow, that's kind of my thought, is what if we developed a platform by which we did that glossary of terms? So, Commissioner Domke?
I agree we should create a framework that we want to follow, so we're clear about what the intent is, right?
Yeah.
It's really easy to miss the target if you don't know what you're aiming at, so I think that makes a lot of sense. The thing I'm trying to understand was, one of the points you raised had to do with, and maybe I misunderstood it, but focusing on the ordinance language versus the comp plan language. And I want to be cautious that we are following the right sequence, since the comp plan's supposed to inform our ordinances and our zoning codes. I know we, we have to do a little bit of back and forth, because we're not starting with a clean slate. We have existing ordinances and existing zoning definitions, but we can change those, one, but in two, I just want to be sure that we're not trying to backwards force the comp plan to align with ordinance terminology. I think we should clearly say what we want, what terms we want to use and how we want them to be used, and then feed them into ordinance if the ordinance needs to change to follow suit, because I think that's the correct order to build things in. So, I just want to be, I want to understand what the recommendation was that you were reading, or what your thoughts were on that.
Okay. The comment wasn't really which direction you go, it was that if you define a word, that it needs to be present in your ordinance, that that's, those are where you're picking your glossary of terms from. And so, you're...
Okay.
It wasn't that you, you're right in what your, what your description is, it's just that if the word light pollution is in your comprehensive plan, but it's not in your ordinance, then you wouldn't give a definition of light pollution. If you needed to use the word light pollution, it needs to have some way in which, and it comes down to a lot of what the planners say, is, well, what's the enforceability of it if it's not in the ordinance? The definition of the word being in the ordinance is how they're making, when they're making glossaries, they're choosing words that are in the ordinance to come up with, as that's where they're using their defining terms, because that's where your enforceability comes from. That is the standard across the various, there's a lot of planning dictionaries, the APA isn't the only planning dictionary, but that is one of the uniform things that they're saying when they're identifying what terms to define. And I think it's in, in what you're referencing is, as we make these lists of words, you know, like commercial, are we using that in an ordinance? Because it might not be the right word to use if we're not using it in the actual ordinance, because then how do we explain to the community what is like commercial if there's not teeth? And I think that's part of what sometimes people are commenting on, is what does that mean? And then, well, this, because at the end of the hearing, once we're all done, we go to a hearing and we say, the comprehensive plan is our guiding document, the ordinance is what we're really enforceable. So, the word like commercial, if someone is getting a conditional use permit for like commercial, and the comprehensive plan explains it, what is the definition of that by way of the ordinance, and where do we find that, so that there's enforceability of what that means?
Yeah. I agree, they need to, they need to transfer over, anything that is of weight, anything that is informing zoning, needs to show up in the ordinance. I agree with that. So, is, is the suggestion then that the definitions or glossary of terms only live in the county ordinance, and that that one place then defines all of those terms for both the enforcement of code as well as the comprehensive plan?
It wasn't where it lived, it's just where you pulled your words from. That's, that, it was your document, should your word, your glossary of terms, needs to be reflected in your ordinance, because that's what you're defining. It wasn't, you could put it at the back, your appendix of your comprehensive plan, you could put it on your code website, it was, it was just where you pull your words from.
When you say pull your words from, I'm sorry, I'm just not tracking what you mean by that. Pull, pull them from, for what?
You shouldn't define, you shouldn't use a glossary of words that are not in, the words need to be in your ordinance, not just in your comprehensive plan.
Okay. So, if you have a word in your comprehensive plan, but it's not in the ordinance, then we're not going to define that word?
In the glossary. What is your, because the argument that the APA gives is your, your ordinance is your, that's your enforcement kind of guideline. So, it's not that, so it is not that the words in a comp plan don't have a definition to them, it's, it's in terms of how you're applying it has to mirror what's in your ordinance. So, it's more of the process by which you create a glossary, not just defining terms.
So, when we are crafting new ordinance, the evaluation is, is it in accordance, or does it align with the comprehensive plan? And this point, we have it written as, not in conflict with the policies of the plan. So, if we have a glossary of terms that help define what the policies mean, then that will all lead towards ordinance changes. So, I think Commissioner Domke made this point, that rather than trying to match glossary of terms to current ordinance, you can craft your language that will lead towards ordinance changes later. So, take your, your example of like commercial. We do have a definition like commercial, there's a use for like commercial. If the board wanted to expand that and have a, and create a like commercial zone, all of that foundation could be laid in the comprehensive plan to include definitions or, you know, terms as defined, and then it would be further refined in the ordinance as that gets changed.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying, it's that, when you use a glossary, the word that you find in the glossary needs to be in your ordinance as well. That's all I'm saying.
I agree. Yep.
Alan has had his hand up for a second, so I want to make sure we call on Alan.
Hi, Alan Songstead. We had this debate last night. Chapter eight of Title 12 has a lot of definitions in it, and we were looking at that, we had a list. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're good.
You know, we, the list we had last night, I understand it's not a comprehensive list, but, you know, some of those terms were already defined in, in chapter eight, and we decide, you know, we debated whether we should use those, or whether we should use them in the context of the comprehensive plan, if that's different. So, bottom line is, and I think the reason we decided that maybe we should just get this to the new commission, is that we needed better direction from the board as to, you know, what, what do you want? Do you want, do you want something, you want to explain the context in which certain terms are used in the comprehensive plan? Or do you want to, and is that going to be used then in the, in the, in the actual ordinances? In which case, you'd have to change perhaps some of the definitions in chapter eight. So, there needs to be some clear direction from the board to the Planning Commission, this one or our new one, as to what exactly the board wants, because we weren't sure. And we did the best we could with some of the terms last night, where we tried to, you know, we used a combination of, you know, federal definitions, you know, other, you know, other definitions that we could find, and in what we believe, the context of those words, how those words were used in the comprehensive plan. But sometimes that doesn't track with chapter eight. So, you know, we, whatever Planning Commission needs to have some, some clear direction from the board, otherwise, there's going to be a lot of wasted time.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
I don't disagree, and that's when I was looking at the different dictionaries, that it was, I can come up with a whole lot of words we want a definition for, but which words do you choose need to be defined? And how do you select what the best word was? And that's where I came up with, I think we need to create a context by which this glossary is created by a standard that can be supported by the industry. And that's where, looking at what the industry standard was for the glossary of terms, was where I felt like, instead of just sending you guys lists of words, saying, come up with a definition of, what are we looking for in a glossary? What's the standard? What do we do, and what do we not want to do? And with that, the APA actually gives some very good guardrails of how you create a glossary, and I think that can be the foundation by which we start recognizing that there are words in that, in that dictionary that aren't similar to what Bonnaroo County is doing, but the foundation of the creation of a glossary, I think, is universal across how a lot of these dictionaries have been created. That will provide that foundation, because I don't think it's fair to just give them, here's a short list of words to define, versus this is how we're going to create that glossary. So...
Yeah, I agree, it's a good question, and having a clear target to inform makes a lot of sense. So, for me, the key is that we have a lot of descriptors that are crucial to writing a comprehensive plan, so those descriptors need to be defined. If it's not 100% obvious in the context of the sentence, these are simple examples of high density and low density. How our county uses those terms is completely different than what, how they're used at a national level, or a city planning context. So, those are things that, those descriptive terms need to be defined, so that it's clear what our intent is for our specific comprehensive plan. And then, I agree that it makes sense that we should look at what definitions, how many of the terms that are being used in the comp plan, that are these key descriptors, are already in existence, in definition of Title 12, Chapter 8? And then, does that definition work as it was intended in the comp plan? And if it doesn't, we either change the definition and figure out all the tentacles, tendrils that go out, and what else has to change to go with it, or we use a different term in the comp plan, so that we're not overlapping with and having to modify Title 12 in order to create consistency. But I, I think we have to look at each term in the context of how it was used in the comp plan. Does it exist in our ordinance and code? And then, if it does exist, is there a conflict? And how is the most effective and efficient way to address that conflict of definitions? Do we replace a term, or do we redefine a term? And then, decide which, which item is going to drive the other, but in the end, I just want to be sure that we build consistency, so that we're not, we're not asking the Planning Commission or the Planning Department to try and craft ordinance that is based on ambiguity of trying to figure out these definitions on the fly. That's what I really want to avoid.
I think that there's, and then we'll go to Matt, there's, there is also the issue that all of these, that I've looked at in terms of definitions, that some of these, you're going to have more than one definition based on its use, and we have to accept that, because we have to, if you're doing a glossary, you have to include the language for planning, zoning, developers, realtors, elected, you're trying to bring a definition of terms together. And so, in some ways, they, and they actually did a really good job in the APA of giving examples of, the definition in the developer means this, especially development was that word, where it's overused across everybody's profession, and it meant something different. But in doing that, they had disclaimers of examples in their glossary of where you would use, this is where this definition might apply, and that's where that interpretation of who's looking at that particular code. But in their ordinance, which is why I think a little bit of weighing on that, is, in the ordinance, when they're talking about development, this is what they're meaning, having little numbers, you know, that were by the word development, of where their definition in that glossary was being used, which is why they justified using different variations of words based on the different industries that they were trying to capture, because that's part of, it's difficult to have the developer write their, their information to the county about something, not using developer language, but switching to county language. So, Matt?
Matt Lynn Scott. You know, when we were, when we were drafting that comprehensive plan, and all those components, for myself, I was, I always had in the back of my mind that we're using the definitions that are already in Chapter 8, that's already in ordinance. If we were to go back and change a lot of those definitions in the glossary, we needed to go ahead and take another, another glance at that entire comprehensive plan, including all those components, for the fact that some of those, I think, I used a term last night, gold posts are going to be moved. And so, for myself, when we were drafting all those components, I had in mind and kept in mind those definitions that the county has already adopted in ordinance.
And that's helpful to understand, but I haven't heard the commission say that that was what was done, so I don't, I don't know that that was done consistently or checked through the process of development of the documents. Is that an accurate statement?
This is Don Davis. Interesting, the components were developed over a period of months, if not years. So, as we, as we worked through that, I think all of us looked at the code, because obviously the comprehensive plan components and the policies and so forth lead to the code. Two parts, one, existing code, does that, does that force the comp plan to mirror existing code, or if it's just taking a slightly different look at it, or saying, well, it really should be this way, and therefore, subsequent code change to mimic that? So, those two parts always kept in mind, but the terms, terminology, all through it, it's, it's in that sense, a technical document, because there's all these terms that need to be interpreted pretty much one way. And where do you start? I think we were hesitant to come up with a new term, or a new understanding of a term. So, like Matt said, we pretty much, across the board, looked at what's in Section 8 or Chapter 8 of Title 12 for those definitions. It's interesting. Just in that, I remember going through that one night, and we started looking at the definitions that are listed there, and we found at least one definition where we could not find how it was in an ordinance. Like, why is it there? Just in case you needed to know. So, coming up with a glossary for the comp plan, it's a good exercise. I agree, the APA document really got into it, because that's a, it's a key issue nationwide, you know, whether that's in an urban setting or a rural setting, mostly the APA stuff, there's a tendency to focus on the urban. But anyway, Eric's got his hand up, too.
Eric?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw out an idea, the glossary, comprehensive plan as an appendix, or whether we rely on Section 8 or some other solution. I believe invariably, because these definitions can very frequently be contextual, right? There may be times where we can define, for example, a low density in our glossary, but when we're writing something in the comprehensive plan, and perhaps even in the ordinance down the road, but certainly when we're writing in the comprehensive plan and we want to use the term low density, we have to ask ourselves, what are we intending to do in this comprehensive plan when we use that word? And if we go back and look at the glossary definition that we may have already created, we may say, you know what, that definition in this one single case doesn't really help us achieve what we're trying to do, so therefore, we may need to have a slightly different definition just in this one area. So, I think the possibility exists, if not is very likely, that wherever we put the glossary, there will be times where, when you're writing something in the comprehensive plan, or like I said, maybe the ordinance down the road, where you say, okay, we're going to define low density specifically in this area to mean this thing subtly, maybe a little bit different than what's in Chapter 8, because we need it to mean something very specific as it relates to this specific section.
I think that's true. I think that, and that's, in terms of the APA, they account for needing to do exactly what you just described. It just means it's a lot of work. I mean, that, when I looked at that, that's a lot of work to give the definitions for the areas, but that's part of why I think they compile a dictionary from a lot of different areas.
Yeah, I think it's a good point. And for example, though, I've been looking at Chapter 8 of Title 12, and, you know, the terms, high density, low density, sanitary services, none of those exist in Chapter 8. And those are, are thoroughly used throughout the land use component. And so, I think it's really important that we do create, you know, that, that kind of rigor that Eric was just talking about is ultimately, is... that Eric was just talking about is ultimately is a technical document and we need to do a technical review and determine whether or not we have to have terms that have more than one definition. I mean, right, in the English language, that happens, right? We look at a dictionary and there's more than one definition for a term depending on its use. I think we can account for that or we have to wordsmith something and intentionally use different terminology to convey the same idea so we don't create confusion.
Yeah, I think that should be the exception, not the rule, right? I mean, we should always try and rely on the established dictionary glossary wherever we put it, but occasionally there may be times where we'll need to add a specific, a more specific definition somewhere.
Agreed.
I think that even, like I was looking for, because I thought we used a term, light commercial, we have low impact commercial, but our definition is light industrial. And so are we talking, is all of that really talking about the same thing? Light industrial is in our dictionary, low impact commercial isn't in our dictionary. So do we shift the words so that they mirror what we can define? But I, but I agree with you, Eric. Dave Bowman had his hand up and then Alan. Dave?
Good morning. Dave Bowman here. So a couple of things I wanted to point out is, I said this to the commissioners last night, one of the reasons that the glossary of terms at this juncture is so, that the need seems to be strong is because if you look at the history in the past, you know, six years or whatever, of land use decisions being made in, resulting in decisions that clearly, or I think arguably you could say, were not in line with what the intent of the code or the intent of the comprehensive plan was, but because they were used with amorphous language, that the applicant or the appellant or the county or whomever was able to argue what something might mean and therefore get it, end up with a decision that really wasn't in line with what the intent of the, of the original language was. And as we're going into revising the code now and starting, you know, especially in Chapter 3, but all of them really, and we tighten that language up and make it and bring it in line with the policies and the intent of the comp plan, that some of these are, the, the need to define them is going to diminish. And I also very much agree with Commissioner Hedin and Songstad that the context, you know, you should be, in most cases, should be able to determine the intent of the meaning of the word from the context in which it's in. And then the other thing I would say is, I mean, I'm all for a glossary of terms, don't get me wrong, but we don't need to define, like the word impact came up last night. Well, how do you define the word impact? I mean, it, it has to be in the context. And another thing you can do is if the meaning of, of the intent of the meaning is different in one context than it is in another, that can be dealt with, it might get a little awkward in trying to craft the language, but it can be dealt with parenthetically that way where if it differs from what the definition is in the glossary or there isn't a definition or, and it's different in different contexts, that could be dealt with parenthetically in a particular section of code. And later on in, you know, given that the comp plan is supposed to be a living document, we should be looking at it yearly, those kinds of things could be addressed also to go back and fix something parenthetically that's potentially a misunderstanding. So, thanks.
Thank you. I was going to ask a question too of everyone because I, you see this oftentimes where when you're making a positional argument that you, that the person presenting their argument provides their definition of their, what their interpretation of something is. And so a person that wants to present a planning document, and I'll go kind of like in debating, when you have your resolution, you define each terms and you say where your definition comes from to convince your panel that, when I looked at how exhaustive some of these dictionaries are, that isn't to say that people can't be reconditioned to saying, based on the American Planning Association definition of light commercial, this is why I think this meets it and is in line with the comp plan. We don't have to define every single word. I think it's just the words that we essentially kind of run into speed bumps into our community that might warrant that glossary, but not every term. There's always that as an option too, to address it, which some areas do use a kind of a planning direction where they're encouraging people to do more than just write something on a document, but say, where are you getting your position for your application and how are you defining it so that when they're bringing it, that they're bringing you the substance by which they're coming up with their interpretation that they feel that they fit what they're trying to do by bringing you, you know, based on Blackstone's dictionary's definition of this, this is why I think it's fit. That's also a way to, and I say that only because some of these dictionaries are hundreds of pages long and we're not going to be doing that. I don't think that's what we're doing, but.
I agree, we're not going to do that. I, I would caution though that I think we have to have enough definition, whether it's through being able to use current standard dictionaries that we can reference or whether it's through our own definitions for specific terms that are being uniquely used in our scenario. As an applicant, I should be able to look at our code, our comp plan and understand what's being required of me. I shouldn't, I shouldn't have to build a unique argument. I should just be able to look at it and say, I do or I don't comply. And it's a reasonable assumption for me to put in, submit an application, pay a fee and expect an outcome because it's clear to me what the outcome should be based on the information contained in those requirements. So if I, if I have to try to come in and build an argument and win a case based on some unique angle, to me, that's a failure of our, preparing our comp plan and our ordinances to create a level playing field for everyone to come into and be able to make a very reasonable and sound judgment call on whether or not an application is, is likely to be approved. I, I think we owe the public that level of definition.
Well, I'm not saying that's not what you do. I'm saying that in some ways, we allow people to put in applications with very minimal information and essentially from a staffing of the county, we're building the argument versus asking for a little bit more. So I'm saying key terms in our document absolutely need to be defined, but we're not creating an exhaustive dictionary and that it's reasonable to have people that are submitting their applications provide more substance to the applications versus, and I think that's in part why sometimes our application process evolves based on an understanding that changes. And then we have, you know, this is a revised application where that's, I think, where you get community says, well, that's not the application that was originally submitted. It has changed over time as we're going down because kind of the definition of what we're doing has changed. So I'm saying that you ask for more is not unreasonable, but that we need to identify and define critically because I agree, I should really know that I'm going to get it or not, but I also should have an expectation of giving more than just my name and parcel number with a request for zone change and that's all that I need to put on it and the county makes it kind of work.
I hear you. Yeah, I think more detailed applications would be helpful at times for sure. I, I just want to be sure that we're not advocating for.
Oh, no, no.
Asking people to reinterpret things and come up with some new angle that we're.
No, just.
I'm going to use this fifth dictionary over here that you guys don't reference. It defines it differently.
We've had a couple of them where we've said, well, you put this in your actual application, but the word was used differently in the application itself from one line to a different line. And so the meat, then the question from the public is, well, what are you trying, and I think the word was recreation. I think someone put recreation and it was used differently in the application. And so it was, are you trying to create a recreational facility on your lot? Are you trying to create, and the person's answer of recreation was, they just wanted to recreate, but we have a definition of recreation.
Right.
That's what I mean is compelling a little bit more. Alan?
Yeah, so Alan Songstad, maybe some, some clarity or not clarity, but some definition, some explanation of the approach we tried to use last night. So high density, low density has been brought up by Commissioner Domke. The way, the way we approached that, we said, well, okay, high density, what does that mean? What does that mean in Bonner County? So we looked at, we looked at the zoning districts, what we considered high density, which was basically suburban recreation and those, those districts that have smaller lots. So we defined it in terms of what, so high density would be the requirements for, for suburban district and recreation and so on. And low, low density was, you know, rural residential and ag forest. So we use the zoning definitions for that. I don't know if that's what you guys have in mind, but that's what we did. So we have a specific definition that's, it's more comprehensive than I just stated it, but that's how we define low density and high density. With, but now we took a different approach. We came in sanitary services and we, you know, we pulled out a definition that's basically on federal law, 33 USC, which is United States Code, Section 1263G. And it basically is sanitary services shall mean water supply, sewage disposal, solid waste disposal and other services necessary to maintain generally accepted standards of personal hygiene and public health, which is the way we used it in the comp plan. So I don't know if those approaches have anything to do with what you're talking about, but I think some clarity on that would be helpful because that's how we kind of approached it last night.
I, in my opinion, that's perfect. It's, you know, where are the, again, to me, where are the key terms that should be defined? And then if, if we, if we can't point to some other source that we want to use that definition, well, let's just point to that, right? If that's great, including like you said, Title 12, Chapter 8 of our county code, I just confirmed, and you may have said this earlier, the term development is already there. And we had questioned how we were using that at times through our discussions of the implementation part of our policies. And that definition from my quick review, looks like it probably answered all the questions we had about how, how that term was going to be used different ways at different times in the policies. And so we can probably just remove a number of items that we started off on the list because we don't need it because it already exists in, in the Title 12. And so we probably also want to add something in the glossary of terms that states kind of the order of hierarchy with which we utilize our definitions, right? So if it's not in this glossary, then the first place we go for a definition would be our code, our county code. If it's not defined in our county code, then we go to whatever, you know, federal code, APA, but order of hierarchy so that we know where to go to for a definition if it's not in the glossary. And then we already have that by default right now, right, in our code that says, hey, if it's not defined in this code, then you go to Merriam-Webster's 11th edition, whatever. So to me, it's just a matter of hierarchy so that if in doubt, anybody can go find what definition they should use. Is that, does that both answer the question and does that from a logic path seem to make sense? Is that what, where kind of where you were going, Alan?
Yeah, you know, we, we, as I said earlier, you know, we kind of debated whether or not you, you wanted us to use the Chapter 8 definitions, which was my original thought, we should use those, or whether, you know, we don't want to use those and we want to have something separate from the, for the comprehensive plan, which doesn't make sense to me, but I, I would agree that we, you know, we, you can set up a hierarchy of, I mean, there are certain terms that, that need to be defined, low density, high density with respect to what we consider that to be in Bonner County, which is different than LA County. So that's why we try to fashion that in terms of what, what we already, at least in the comprehensive plan are considering high density, which was the suburban and recreation and so on.
I like that. I think that maybe what the takeaway is so that we can make sure we get to the map today is that the board needs to give some direction of the process like, like, like we're discussing and that we set the foundation by which we want to set up kind of the, the guardrails for the glossary, the hierarchy of when it is not defined where we want to go with it in terms of what is our resource, you know, if it's going to be the APA or are we going to go to the Merriam-Webster 11th edition for our definition of terms? And then we kind of set up a very clear structure that gives the guidelines by which to start the process and maybe it's then going to be with the next commission going section, like going through sections of, you know, maybe it's the letter A, these are some words the commissioner suggests that we might consider a definition or it's already very clear in our current glossary, there's not an issue or concern with the way in which these words are defined and just citing where those, I think one of the things is what is the reference or resource by which the definition is pulled from might be helpful so that we know where those are coming from and then just go through it in, in that way, but giving the, the guide rails because I think that's what the commission is saying that they did not have is how do you go about choosing where to define and what to do? Density was a hard one. I looked up that through multiple dictionaries and one of the interesting things is a lot of them gave density on its own as a definition based on where you were. So density was what is your maximum amount per what you were zoned for? And then their definition of your high density was anything that requires a lot on smaller lots, housing to be put on smaller lots was in itself inherently just considered high density. And I think that there is those little, then you add in how, what does that look like in Bonner County because that's a difference than what you would see in a city. And I think those definitions are going to be those relying on the, some of that expertise of people in planning of, that, that was a hard one because I saw differences throughout almost every dictionary on density, high, low density, and then they added high impact, low impact density and their word impact was pulling into infrastructure issues. That, that's a hard one to define. So he picked a hard example.
So, just a, so I'm, I'm trying to think through the hierarchy and going back to, I think a comment you made earlier, Commissioner Williams, the, trying to think through, would there ever be value, would it ever make sense to have a term defined in the comp plan that's not defined in code? So if it's missing in code and we're going to use it in the comp plan, maybe we should just define it in Title 12, Chapter 8 and not have anything actually defined in the comp plan itself, but just determine what we're missing in Title 12, Chapter 8 and add it.
Yeah, I think that would be.
That might be the cleanest way to do it?
Yeah.
And then we have to decide if we want to change code as well to say that we have more than one dictionary reference for terms that are not contained in our code. Do we start with the APA and then go to Merriam-Webster's or, you know, is there some hierarchy because we find value in that or not? But I think we should ask the question and.
Yeah.
Answer that question.
I think the problem I saw with a lot of the planning dictionaries is they are not dictionaries like a Merriam-Webster's. They're dictionaries based on jurisdictional application of the word, which makes it a little bit, it is going to change based on someone else's jurisdiction, which is one of their cautionary tales in these dictionaries is that definition of rule in our area alone has shifted based on where you are. So.
I agree, it's challenging.
That is, that's where there's got to be that. But I agree, so when I, when you look at the APA, it isn't a dictionary as much as it's a compilation of dictionaries is really what it is. It's not a, it's not a Merriam-Webster. And I think that my reference to if it's not in our defined glossary is that the county uses, like I would word it such a way that I can use a, a dictionary of dictionaries like the APA because that's really what it is to identify, but not that it's a, it's own because it updates based on the shift in essentially the market and planning. That's what, that was my downside of APA was they do a good job of explaining how they come together with that dictionary, but it really is, we don't want our county to be dictated by how other counties are built. That's one of the things we hear from the people, but, so you have to be a little bit cautionary tale on the APA because it isn't areas like ours that are really dictating those definitions. So I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into that.
I agree. It's, looking through it, it's mostly driven by the urban environment. Even, I mean, in my experience, anytime somebody talks about city and regional planning, it's 90% city. it's ninety percent city urban planning and very little regional planning. And so to your point, most references go back to urban environments. And that's, it tips the scale completely to the wrong side for what we're trying to do. It just doesn't fit our community. Yeah, maybe we do need to stay away from that. But I'm definitely liking focusing on just making our, creating definitions that we're missing or that we need to somehow revise just directly in code.
And like a, it doesn't stop us from saying we're going to use this particular dictionary as our go-to for words, but these are also other resources that the county uses when identifying definitions of terms and not that it becomes the standard. And that was my, I guess same similar takeaway is it looks like a dictionary that a little bit pushes you towards a little bit more development
Yeah.
in terms of how things are defined. And so I think it's still a good tool because it does give you multiple definitions of a same similar word. But I also, I don't want to say this is my go from Merriam to APA because it's a dictionary for a compilation.
I agree.
So maybe, are we okay with using, did you guys use Merriam eleventh edition as the standard for the defining terms in eight?
You know, through the comp plan.
Matt Liskat, when we're going through the comp plan and whenever we need to look up a definition, we'd go to Chapter Eight. If it wasn't there, then we would go to the Merriam-Webster, which is kind of interesting because it's the eleventh edition or something. That's way after nineteen ninety-seven.
But at least it's locked in time. So it's not Wikipedia where people can change it on a daily basis.
One of the, what was interesting was, and I don't want to, I think they used, the APA actually uses for their definitions, not counting their compilation of words, the Oxford Dictionary for their definition of their terms. Oxford University Dictionary is what they use to define how they're defining words.
They're not even American.
Look, I can't, I can't do that one.
How could the American Planning Association use a British dictionary? I just don't understand.
It's the dictionary they use.
That's wrong.
All right, Merriam-Webster is based on America first.
So I do have a question for the Planning Commission. Something that came to mind through this conversation is, did you guys ever ask Road and Bridge for their input when it comes to terminology? I'm just wondering, I think our county road standards manual might use some different terminology. I'm just trying to figure out if we should look at alignment with that on definitions as well.
Yes, Don Davis. In the discussions, various discussions with Road and Bridge, some of that came up. I know we've always looked back at the road standards and the words that are in there and should those be used in the comp plan? Do they totally fit and so forth? But I don't know that we landed on any one certain terminology or use or whatever. It was openly discussed for sure.
Okay. I'll probably do a little review of that with them just to, because going through the land use descriptions, working on those, it just struck me a few times. I wasn't sure, we talk about like arterials versus connectors and things of that nature. Well, I know those are industry terms that are regularly used. I don't know if they're what Bonner County uses specifically for our road systems and it would be nice to align those for clarity because sometimes our permitting and things have some overlap between what happens in Title Twelve and what happens with Road and Bridge.
So we did a pretty comprehensive review of the definitions of streets and driveways. And we, the Planning Commission met with the Road and Bridge guys and then they made many comments on that text amendment. I think it was last year or the year before. So sometime in the last twenty-four months, we reviewed and revised the Chapter Eight definition of streets to align better with Road and Bridge's definitions from their road manual.
So the Chapter Eight actually has been modified to address that?
And Matt Mulder and Jason Top had a lot of input into how those definitions were crafted.
Okay. I'll probably just do a quick check then on those other terms.
Even last night, as we were looking at the term urban services, look up in Chapter Eight, Title Twelve, and it goes through, it talks about, and the last part is paved roads. Urban paved roads?
Yeah.
So wait a minute. So I don't think, I don't think the Road and Bridge definition gets into what is an urban road versus rural road and so forth, but we found it very odd that the urban services definition in Chapter Eight included simply paved roads.
Okay.
That would put the entire county in the urban area.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll be good to look at. I was just looking at the definition of street in Chapter Eight, and there's minor collectors and major collectors plus minor arterials, but then principal arterials, not me. So there's some.
There aren't any.
In our county, nonexistent.
Not on the county road system.
Just defined, but not.
The state system has the principal arterials. The decision quite a few years ago was step down from that and it could be a minor arterial that the county would claim in that category, whereas before that it was all collectors.
Okay.
Thinking back to two thousand, two thousand and two when the previous road standards were done.
Gotcha. So I think it'll be really minor if there's any provisions required, but we could probably just do a quick review on that for the land use designation definitions to be sure we have alignment of the terminology that's in Chapter Eight right now.
I think there was one other thing I wanted to comment on. I think we've done, had a case like this, I can't remember what it was, where the better way to define something was not in words but by illustration, and it had to do with odd lots, side, odd lots, and what does it, what are our terms mean when the lot isn't as we want it to be to help us understand it? And that was one of the things that it looked like we underutilized is using some photographs to describe lots. And that was one thing that it felt like we might be able to utilize more in our glossary. He's snatching it back from you.
That visualization quite often is used in glossaries versus definitions. Glossaries can be a little bit, because glossary, the word glossary just means how's it used, how's the word used in conversation? So putting, adding examples, like in the APA document, they gave plenty of examples to explain what it meant, but you can picture it.
Especially for those odd ones, odd lots that we have. That was a, it actually, sometimes the picture helped you understand it more than the actual words, words did on some, especially when they were in their setback section and they gave examples of lots that they have seen. And our county is full of those weird shaped lots of what does that actually mean? I think that that might be something in your glossary too. Matt, you were going to say something.
As I was going to say, I don't want to carry this on forever. Matt Liskat here, regarding the roads. So we've gone ahead and dropped the language in the comprehensive plan. We gone ahead and used that table from Road and Bridge that explained what roads exactly are, the major and minor collectors, major, minor arterials in the highway systems. So we use that as the backdrop for the language that we utilized in the comprehensive plan. And I don't know if that's in, that road list is in Title?
Title Twelve, Chapter Eight. For material.
Well, when I'm thinking of, yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, street, street has all the subcategory definitions included under it, which is kind of funny because the definition of street starts with a roadway. So apparently, street and roadway are interchangeable terms, so that helps clarify. Okay, no, that's, so I guess to circle all the way back to the beginning for clarity, is it clear to the Planning Commission what we're asking for or do we need to better describe it?
I think it might be helpful to them if we actually gave a document that they could have passed out and kind of reviewed. And I think that that is what I, one of the things I did like, but a lot of these dictionaries is before you actually get to their terms, they explain to you how they came to make what it's intended to do and what it's not intended to do. And I think that if you really want to not waste time, that we need to present that concrete information to the planning to start that. And then I think what I'm hearing us say is our focus is what we have in Title Eight, what do we need to add or not Title Eight in our Twelve-Eight? What do we have there? And then I think there does need to be some cross-reference of if our authority of definitions comes from Merriam, that we need to make sure that that's where those definitions are coming from. And if they're not, why? And how did we get a different definition? I think that, I think that's a reasonable cross-reference check for that. And then what words do we feel that we need to add to that? Or potentially take away if they're not, if we're not using those words? Or do we need to, like I found, like that comment that I made about, I think it was something commercial where, we call it light industrial, but it looks like we're saying it differently in the comprehensive plan. I mean, so I mean, I think if we find things like that, kind of maybe fixing that aspect of it. But if we really, if what we mean to say is light industrial with the definition that's there, that definition is pretty big when I look at that. I've been asked this question. That's a hard word. That, that's huge because I, I think that's, I think we also have to consider, do we want examples of what is, for example, light industrial? When you can say everything that happens in the warehouse, well, isn't mostly all of Amazon in the warehouse? Would we call that light work? I don't know. Because it's, like, there are some, and I think maybe if you're going to do, because some of these feel like that's a lot, like when you look at that definition, research and development activities, the manufacturing, compounding, processing, packaging, storage, it's just a warehouse. So does that count as light industrial? Is that what you would, that's a lot.
I think it does because, yeah, manufacturing, but I understand what you're saying.
It's not, it's where that goes. And that goes back to where do we put that definition in terms of our zoning? I think that, and not changing it to low impact, commercial, like keeping the words the same as what's in that definition so we know, is low impact, commercial the same as light industrial?
Okay.
This is Don Davis again. Couple things. One, from a practical standpoint, I think the Planning Commission would greatly enjoy having further direction from the board on this, mainly because when this is going to be taken up, we're going to have at least three new members who may or may not have any background or experience, along with three or four of us who will be on the commission. And we need to involve all the people so we all get the same direction. The other thing is, as we discussed, many of these words that we talked about today and in the lists and so forth, and just the discussions that we had on the commission about terminology, one of the things we kept running into was the fact that the assessor's office uses a definition for land use categories that come out of a document that they refer to. And should we all be on the same page? And that's a possibility for sure, is just looking at it and does it fit? The assessor uses it consistently. So there's those definitions for the various land uses because that's what people are taxed on, is the use of the land. So just another one.
I think that's a really good point.
Final, final comment, I hope, is some of the definitions, the terms, we're going to come up with a very localized definition of it or use of it because it may be very, very singular use in this county. So it may not just fall into what APA, like we've already said, a lot of that is urban-oriented. But if we can come up with something that's clear and it says how Bonner County intends that that means, what the intent is, then I think that'll be, then there won't be a reference for it. It'd just be, this is what it means. It doesn't have to, nobody else has to bless our testing, bless our meaning. Okay, forget what I mean.
Yeah, I think the document mount here that Don was alluding to, and it is actually in Title Twelve, is a North American Standard Industrial Classification Manual. And so we kind of have that language already in ordinance that, you know, if there's a question, that's where we go to. And that's strictly what the assessor office uses.
I think there's actually value to what Commissioner Davis is saying in terms of land use, when it, especially when it comes to what people are taxed on, that language being the same, similar is beneficial.
The difference there is that we're looking at future potential uses, not actual. So people aren't only ever assessed on what the actual use is. So if you have a residential property in a commercial zone, you're not being taxed as a commercial use.
Right. I see the difference. I think that there's a little bit of overlap that can occur between the two. And I think that's that delineation of the definition of use versus what your available use is, is what that distinguishing characteristic might be there.
I volunteer if the board would like to draft a description for the Planning Commission of what we'd like them to do. And then the board can, we can go over it and make sure we all agree. And then we can send that on to the Planning Commission so that they have that written description of what we're requesting as they asked for.
Is that, are.
Is that good?
I can forward over to you some of the research things of considerations on how we build a glossary thing if you have an interest in that. Commissioner Corn, do you have anything you want to add to that comment?
I'll add my comments to the draft email. I just want to make sure that we're keeping our words and our terminology the same in our comp plan versus our zoning and all that other stuff. I think words need to be consistent so that people don't get confused. I think in government, we always want to keep the words simple so everybody pretty much understands what it is. I don't think we need to be changing definitions that are in Chapter Eight now. I think that is going to change the whole comp plan. So we don't want to change the definitions that are in there right now. I do think that we may want to add some, but I also agree that we don't want to add a hundred pages to this glossary. So I look forward to that draft, Brian.
Buy one glossary.
As long as you don't want it quickly.
I'm typing notes as we speak.
I'll send you some links to some
Do you guys know, I see our code references both the Standard Industrial Classification Manual and the North American Industry Classification System?
Yes, two different.
So they use both, correct?
Yeah, and oftentimes you won't find one and you'll find the other. I think it has been used.
Yeah, I'm trying to, there was some issue that came before us that we, somebody referenced one, but it was in the other. Clear as mud, love it. So much easier that way. I will, I will work on a draft that we can, if you want, I could just plan to bring it back to tomorrow's workshop and.
Or if you want, get it out before then so we can take a look at it.
I'll try. I'm making no promises, Commissioner.
You offered.
I offer, I just didn't give a timeline.
Alan? Alan, are you there?
Yeah, I didn't hear you calling me. Just for my clarification, is the board, does the board intend to actually address the land use component or is that going to be deferred until this glossary is all worked out?
I would like to move forward. I think we have enough understanding of the intent to move forward. I just think that before we publish it, we should address the issues so that we aren't questioning the definitions.
I think that we should move forward with the land use component. I think the glossary is a work in progress and I think we already a work in progress. And I think we already have a good, good start of the direction. I don't think we should hold it, kind of similar to the implementation piece of it. Commissioner Corn?
Yeah, I agree. We need to move forward with it.
Okay. I believe Commissioner, let me see. So it's 10:46 and we have a meeting at 11:00 a.m. What's the board's position on starting now, putting, doing our ambulance meeting? What's the appetite for continuing on the land use component?
I'm, I'm good if you guys want to recess for the ambulance district meeting and then come back to spend the, the last hour to start in on the land use designation language. I have put together a draft. So I've, I've taken the current language that was proposed by the planning commission. I have rebuilt it into a table format. And I've also modified based on my prior comments, the current mixed use by breaking it into a new definition of mixed use and an industrial, a separate industrial designation. So I have all of that in a table format to, to present for you guys to look at. And we could compare that side by side with what was proposed by the planning commission. So you guys can, we can compare and contrast. So if you want, we can come out of the ambulance district meeting and start on that. Or we can just pick up and start on that in tomorrow's workshop, whatever your preference is.
Let's see what Alan has there. Alan?
Yeah, thank you. So the land use designations are just a part of the land use component? Is, is the text of the land use component going to be addressed? Or is that okay? Or, you know, what's, what's going to move forward? I'm not, I'm just, I'm not really understanding what's, what the approach is.
So the full land use component to include the text should be moving forward with discussion. And I think Commissioner Donkey is saying that he's created something that he wants to put before the board, but the whole component is being put forward.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I'm asking for the board to spend time right now focusing on the land use designation, you know, map descriptions, because to me, that's, I, I think the overall land use component as proposed, I'm, I'm in agreement. I appreciate the overall approach and the detail and information that's in there. I had just a couple of minor questions that go through in some of the subsections. But for, but I, as I, as we've talked about in the past, I would like to make a change to the mixed use aspect. And that has a trickle down effect. And then I have various, with very minor edits, restructured that so that instead of having paragraphs only or paragraphs with a reference table, I just built the whole thing as a simple table so that it is more consistent in its structure of how the information is delivered. So that it, hopefully it becomes a faster reference to, for the same basic information. And that's where we can look at them side by side so that the board and the planning commission can see how I've modified the format to try to convey the same type of information.
If you have that, Brian, can you forward it to the, to staff and to the?
Yeah, I'll ask the planning director if he could do that. So yeah, that, I'd like to have the board focus our conversation for our next conversation on the map designation descriptions, because to me, that's the real meat of the conversation. And then when, when we come to agreement on what those should be, then we can start, in my opinion, walking through the map and then deciding if we're going to make any changes to the map. And we can look at the map for reference about what I'm proposing for the designation change. Because I think we have a couple of examples we could look at to try to figure out if what I'm proposing is viable, workable. But that would be my suggestion for the board.
So what's the position of the planning commission who's present now, knowing that we won't get through all of that today? Are you wanting, would it be preferable to start now or do it all tomorrow with, there would be no discussion really on the glossary aspect of it and only focusing? So there's value in saying both. There's value in starting now and getting part of it out, but there's also value in just doing a running review and then giving the planning commission an opportunity to read what Commissioner Donkey has compiled together so that you come with some information. I want to be respectful of your, I don't think he's ever actually put it down. So I don't know. Alan, are you hand back up?
Yes. It would be, I mean, my suggestion would be that you address it tomorrow and give the planning commission an opportunity to review the draft that Commissioner Donkey has prepared. So we might have some comments on that, or maybe we don't. But otherwise, if you do it today, I, do you have a time certain that that would, that would take place?
Yeah, we can. But I don't have any problem with, if you guys would like to take a look at it and offer feedback, I welcome the feedback. I wasn't sure what level of engagement you wanted. So I'm fine with waiting until tomorrow if the planning commission would like to do that.
Well, this is Dawn. A couple of things along that. I agree with Alan. It's, but the timeline today, are we talking about another hour to get into it? Another hour's time? And would that be with the upcoming meeting at 11:00? Is that going to take 20 minutes, half an hour, an hour?
That's not a time.
Yeah.
I'll guess from 12 to 1:00.
There's.
When we would continue.
Okay. Because I think there is benefit in just seeing what you're talking about first. Then we can think about it and come back tomorrow with better thoughts, just some basic discussion or presentation today. Come back tomorrow, having thought about it overnight and looked at it in, in written form. So I think there's benefit in doing that.
I think the planning director could literally pull it up. And in the next two minutes, he could just see what the format is, have it emailed to you, because it won't take long to see and understand just the format.
Put it on the drive.
Because it's going to look dramatically similar to the matrix you guys worked on previously.
So I think what there's, they would like to take a look at it and digest what it is and offer some meaningful dialogue tomorrow. I also want to be respectful of the noon to 1:00, because ambulance is from 11:00 to noon. Commissioner Corn hasn't given comment on that. But I, I feel like I, we should defer to the commission having an opportunity to see what you're presenting in advance of it so that they can have some thoughtful consideration. Because that's what they're, I mean, this is, they're devoting some time to it.
I agree. I thought what they were asking for though was a quick preview before we break.
It would serve, it would serve both purposes. We get a little bit of, I think it's always better to have somebody explain it in, in your presence.
He wants a quick preview.
Yeah.
So that's different than what, that's different than what Alan was asking. Alan is saying, send it to him and then come back tomorrow.
Yeah, right. So I'm just commenting on Alan's comment. So if Alan has an objection to that, like he's not going to be available from 12 to 1:00.
Well, I was saying, I can do it right now. We could spend two minutes right now. You could see a quick preview.
Okay.
And then we could just end today's workshop and then pick up tomorrow. I think it'd be the most efficient if you'd like to do that.
That would work.
Okay. And then you're going to drop that document into the?
I'll email this to the planning for sure.
Are you going to drop it into the shared file?
It's.
For the?
For the board.
No. On the, not for the board, I mean, on the community so that they can see the document?
If you want to.
Is that what you're wanting? Your, the document that you've created?
You want to make it available to public?
That's what I'm asking. If it's a document that we're reviewing, are you wanting them to be able to see it? Okay.
Sure. Yep, it's right there. So this, again, I took the, I don't have the matrix that you guys had worked on previously that you then decided not to move forward with based on feedback. But that, this, I started this using that format. That format had five categories. It had characteristics, parcel size, services required, uses, and applicable zone districts. So I just added location criteria as a sixth factor into the table. And then I took the, the majority, I did a little bit of wordsmithing, but took the majority of the language that existed in the designation descriptions that you already had in your proposed land use component and built it into the table. The first one, industrial, of course, I created. So that's a new designation that I'm proposing. And then I changed the mixed use designation. But then after that, it should pretty much be almost a copy paste of what was written into the paragraph descriptions of the other designations. So as you look at it, you'll just see I, I tried to, because the paragraphs didn't always contain the same topics. Sometimes not all the same topics were covered or they were, it was just stated in a different sequence. And so it was just not quick and easy to, say, for example, read rural residential versus ag forest and just understand immediately the differences. And so I'm hoping by just taking the same data and building it in this format, that it'll be a little bit faster and easier for us to look at and compare and see what the differences look like. So I thought that instead of, because of the concerns raised about having a separate matrix that you reference that could create inconsistency or confusion to have, you know, before there was the discussion about having the written paragraph descriptions and a quick reference table, and that there could be some issues about that. So instead of having a quick reference table, I just built it all into a table to try to create consistency and make it a little bit more efficient than reading a paragraph. So that's the format.
So you're suggesting scrap the paragraphs altogether?
I'm saying replace the paragraphs with the tables, correct? That would be my proposal. So from a format perspective, I think that can be a pretty simple conversation tomorrow at the workshop as far as whether people like the idea of replacing the paragraphs with the table format. And the meat of the conversation will be about some of the details, you know, like my suggestion of creating an industrial designation and revising the mixed use designation to not have it include residential. Does that give you the quick preview you were looking for, Dawn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alan, do you have any comment before we end?
Well, I understand, I understand the proposal. I'd like to review it. I do actually plan on putting et cetera at the end of those things. That seemed to be in the craking, some ambiguity.
Yes, it does. It'll be a great conversation to have. There should be a couple of those softballs out there for us to swing at and talk about.
Matt Lyska here. Did you also go ahead and, and color a map as well?
No, I haven't.
This is only, oh, okay.
Yeah, because I didn't think it made any sense to spend time coloring a map if we were going to go in a different direction. So.
So Eric or Dave, do you guys have any comment before we end?
I think it's Eric.
Dave? Dave's been silent the whole time.
No, I don't have any comment.
There you go. All right. So it is 10:59. Tomorrow is already noticed, so this meeting would be adjourned then.
Thank you for participating.
I was on a different computer, so I'll have to go on.